Confirm that you can hear me. Anne, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. We are just going to start as we as we wait for others to join us. So since we met last week, I think the last week was 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 a good one and the Lord really helped us. So I want us to I want us to start by a word of prayer from Anne. Then we are going to see how we've been through the week, then we just do the part we are going to do today. So Anne, welcome so much. You can pray for us even as we start. If you are in a position to do so.
Okay. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before thy presence this moment to dear Lord. We thank you. You glorify your name, Jehovah Father, for this moment with your over king of glory. We pray, my Father, Jehovah God, as we are going to start this meeting with Jehovah Father. At whatever my God, we will be taught today, Jehovah God, to help us in our lives and help us, Jehovah God, to use it, Jehovah King of Glory, in our daily lives with Jehovah. May you bless your father, our host, our preacher today, oh Jehovah King of Glory. Open our hearts, your father, so we may be able to listen and to hear your word on your working or glory in the mighty name of Jesus. I pray that shortly breathing and trusting in you. Amen. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, since we met last week, I just want us to greet one another and to see how we have been. So Anne, how have you been? How was your week and how has your work been since we started it? The week we are in new month, we we met last month. So how have you been?
Um, I really thank God for my week. My week has been fine. Um, I can't comprehend. I thank God for everything, my work, my I can't comprehend. I think everything is okay. Yeah. I don't have much to say, but I thank God for my week. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Lisa's just joined now. Lisa, we are just greeting each other and telling us how you've been since we met, since we met last month. Such chances you have. How have you been?
Uh, thank you. I'm fine. My name is Lisa. I belong to Sivu Guru district. I've been looking forward to this Bible study actually. And the other one was quite high opening and I'm looking forward to this one being as well. Yes, as we go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Lisa. Emily, if you are in a position to hear me, how have you been? And what are you looking up to in this Bible study? Emily, are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, I'm able to hear you. Good evening.
Yeah. Good evening.
Yeah, I'm glad to join the Bible study. I look forward to getting blessed.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Emily. We are just going to them that will join us later, we'll find if we've already started. And Anne had already prayed for us. And right away, last week, actually to them that are new, to them that did not make it for the last Bible study, we have started doing working with God. And last week, we just expounded on the what working with God entails when we say that you're working with God. What are the things that we mean? What are the realities that are there? When people work with God. And so today, we are, we are, we are going to discuss on another subtopic, which is the reasons for working with God. When we talk about working with God, why is it necessary that you have to work with God? Why should you work with God? If somebody asks you, you are going to charge and you claim that you're working with God, what is the main reason or what is the essence of doing whatever you are doing? So we just going to start last week, we 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 discussed on several issues. And like fruitfulness, obedience as ways in which we have to work with God. So today, our guiding verse is going to be Deuteronomy, chapter five and verse thirty-three. Deuteronomy five and verse thirty-three. So anybody who is in a position to to read it can please have the honors of reading Deuteronomy five thirty-three. Anybody?
You said Deuteronomy five verse thirty-three?
Yes. Have you got any time?
No.
Okay. Asha, I will read Deuteronomy five thirty-three, the Bible says. Yes?
Found it. It's amen.
Okay, no problem. You can read.
Ye shall walk in all the ways which the Lord your God has commanded you, that he may live and that it may be well with you and that he may prolong your days in the land which he shall possess.
The Bible says that ye shall walk in the ways of the Lord your God, which he has commanded you, so that you may live and prosper and prolong your days in the land that you will possess. So this is a charge which Moses was giving to the children of Israel. After he had given them the ten commandments. And so he was giving them this charge in order that even after they had gone to the promised land, they were not expected to forget the Lord, their God, who took them out of Egypt, who was with them in the in the wilderness, who made them to have the victories they had. So the Bible says that you shall walk in the ways of the Lord your God, which he has commanded you. Actually, it is coming after they had received, after Moses, they talked to them about the the ten commandments. And so just from the verse we have read, today we are looking at reasons of working with God. And so we want to check what are the, what are the reasons of working with God? So living our lives with God in it makes things very easier and it gives us hope. We may not be in a position to realize it, but working with God is much better than working with him. Working with God is really much better than when we remain not to work with him. So if you look at the verse we have read keenly, what are the reasons you can see that in reality, we need to really work with God? Anybody? Lisa, are you here?
I'm sorry, I stepped out shortly. What was your question?
Okay, no, no problem. Today, just like I've said, we are doing the results for working with God and we have read Deuteronomy five thirty-three, which says that walk in obedience to all that the Lord your God has commanded you, so that you may live and prosper and prolong your days in the land that you will possess. And so from just the verse we have read of Deuteronomy five thirty-three, what are the the reasons you can say for working with God? Why should we work with God? These are the children of the Israel when they were being charged. And Moses was talking to them and telling them, always remember the Lord your God, who took you out of Egypt, who was with you in the wilderness and who will be with you in the land of Canaan, the land of milk and honey, which you are going to to possess. So what are the reasons or what is the reason you can see in the verse we have read that should make us to work with God in reference to the charge Moses gave to the children of Israel? Yes, Lisa?
From the verse that you have read, you've read to us, I see a promise that when, once you walk with God, it will be fruitful. He created us to be fruitful. Therefore, his promise, there seems to be a promise that once you work with God, it will be fruitful in your life. I guess.
Oh, wow. A promise of of working with him. Wow. Okay. Actually.
The verse is saying that it will, you will prolong. Prolong means that there is a promise there that he promises to prolong.
Yeah. That prolong your days in the land you will possess. Is that what you mean, Lisa?
Yes, yes, that is what I mean.
Yes, actually, it is, it is, it is very true. You see, the Bible says that the promises of God are yes and amen. So it means when God has ordained it to happen, then no man or nobody can make it not to happen. It will happen the way God has commanded it. It will happen the way God has ordained it. So the promise of God of prolonging the days of the children of Israel in the land they were to possess was because of them working with him. What do you think would have happened if they did not walk in the ways of the Lord? Could the days uh, could their days in the land or the land of the promise would be prolonged? If they could have not walked in the ways of God?
Um, my answer is no.
Yes.
Because seeing cut short our lives then.
Okay.
Whenever we walk away from God, I mean, I've seen various examples. Whenever we, people stray away from God, their lives are cut short. Either they die young or, you know, they just don't fulfill their purpose as it should have been. So it's important to walk as he say, as the Lord says in his word, because he keeps his word. He prolongs our days. When you serve God and you keep his commands, you live a long and prosperous life.
Wow. It is, it is, it is very true and it is is a reality that if the children of Israel would have not walked in the ways of God, then they are the prolonging of their days in the land they were to possess was going to be vain or it was not going to be achieved. So um, working with God, the reason of working with God, number one, just like Lisa was saying, it's a promise. And it is a promise which is given and when it is given, it will only be fulfilled if we also remain to be faithful to the promise. Thank you so much, Lisa. And you had a point, if you can air out your point, the reason for working with God?
Lisa has already said it. I was, I wanted to say it was a promise, but Lisa has clarified it very well. Yeah, she has said it was my point, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. Allow me welcome as we have some people just joined us online and also in the physical platform. Welcome so much, brethren. Yeah, so we have Jeremy, we have Brian, Larry too, we have just come out, we have Brandon, we have Timo. And online, we have Mary Gary and Masim. So welcome so much. We are doing season two or season two of reasons for working with God and today we're looking at the reasons for working with God. And our guiding verse has been Deuteronomy five thirty-three. And we are looking at why should we work with God? If you talk about working with God, what are the reasons why we should work with God? Number one, we haven't said that it is a promise. In reference to the verse we have read, the children of of Israel, God was only to prolong their days in the land they were to possess. And of course, that is the land of milk and honey. If they remain faithful to working with God. And that is our number one point. So um, anybody who is in a position? Five thirty-three. Which reason can you say that it is a reason why we should work with God in reference to the charge Moses gave to the children of Israel? Okay. Masie?
Yes?
Are you here? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anne is saying in the chat that a reason for working with God is because God is our comfort. Anne, could you please expand on that? Any other reason for working with God? Either online or physical?
Well, I, well, um, a general one is that working with God is working in light. You are working in light because God is right. You are working in obedience. And by doing so, you have some promises that comes with it. And God being holy, if you walk with him, then you, you are, you are, you are purified. You are given the holiness of God. Generally, I would say so. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. So in in working with God, there is purification, as you say. And because God is holy, actually, the more you get to interact with somebody, the more you get to assume their character. Philosopher once said so. And the devil's, I don't know whether it is in the Bible, but the Bible says that do not be deceived. Bad companies corrupt good morals. So it is a reality that the the extent in which you will work with somebody also determines the the behavior or your character. So as you continue to work with God, being that God is holy, you will really get to know the things which you are supposed to do and them that you are supposed not to do. So in the process, there is that part of purification. The Lord is working on you. Thank you so much, Mary Gary. From the, from them that are with me inside here, from Deuteronomy five thirty-three. And we are looking at the charge which Moses gave Israelites on the ways of working with God. What is a reason you can say that we should work with God in reference to Deuteronomy five thirty-three or any other reason exclusive of them that are given in Deuteronomy five thirty-three? Yes, Timothy? Yeah, so please, somebody to confirm that he can hear Timothy?
As a Christian, as a born again Christian, I usually find Jeremiah ten twenty-three being the epitome of my salvation in Christ. Since, let me just read it out for you so that you can all get it. It says, Jeremiah ten twenty-three, oh Lord, leads Jeremiah in the name of the people. I know that the determination of the way of man is not in himself. It is not in man, even in a strong man or in a man at his best to direct his own steps. So in short, it says that my life is not my own, meaning that I had a predetermined purpose, a predetermined destiny. And it all lies in the salvation that Christ gave me on the cross. So yeah, that's the first reason I have, I'd like to give this chance to the others to share their views. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Timothy. Any other person who have a reason why we we really need to work with God in reference to how you have worked with God? How you've seen working with God as a Before we come back to to the people that are in here, Emily is saying that we may live since God is the giver of life. So that is one reason why we need to work with God, that we may live since God is the giver of life. Emily, maybe if you can talk a little bit what you have just written, we will appreciate.
Working with God ensures that we live well, we live a healthy life. That, um, you know, we avoid things that otherwise cause harm to ourselves. So in essence, we, when we work with God, we actually get to live as the word of God says. It is for our own preservation that we keep his ways and his commands.
Okay. For our own preservation that we keep his ways and his commands, that we may live. Thank you so much. And just to emphasize on what Timothy had said, Timothy said that they want, the the reason why he sees why working with God is important is because the life we live is not our own. Or he used his example, the life he lives is not his own. And Jeremiah ten twenty-three, which he read, is saying, Lord, I know that people's lives are not their own. It is not for them to direct their steps. Actually, the Bible says that the steps of the righteous are ordered by God. So any step you make, ask yourself, is your step ordered by God? Are you the one who has taken control over your life? And you order your steps as a human being? Yes, any other reason for working with God? Anybody?
Yes, Joseph. My, my reason why I should work with Christ, because in the book of Psalms, it says, it says, in the book of Psalms one nineteen, it says, your word is the lamp unto my feet and light to my path. Basically, God being leading you are, your feet, you lead you to a greater past. So he is a light unto our feet. So what you will try to end up in a good place?
Thank you so much, Joseph. Just to connect on what Joseph had said, working with God enables working with God makes things possible. If the Bible talks about his word being the light unto our feet, the the lamp unto our feet and the light unto our path. So it means when you work with God, everything will be possible because the light, the lamb give the light and the light gives direction. So direction, if you have a predetermined direction, it will it will enable you to know where maybe it will enable you to know where maybe you are going to. So I think we can read, in relation to that, we can read Leviticus 26, uh, verse 12, Leviticus 26, verse 12. Leviticus 26, verse 12. Anybody who has gotten it?
Yes, I can read it.
Okay.
"I will walk among you and be your God, and you will be my people."
Yes. "I will walk among you and be your God, and you will be my people." This is, this is God talking. And, uh, actually, whenever we work with God, we are the people and assured walk amongst us, we will be his people. So this in the equation are possible. Possible. And it's just like, uh, just Psalms 119, verse 1:5, the word of God. Enable it to be in that manner. So working with God makes things to be possible. Any other reason? Maybe from the experience you've got since you started to work with God? Or maybe, uh, from the Bible? Another reason for working with God?
Uh, I, can I, can I read something?
Yes.
I want to read Psalms 23, verse 4.
Yes.
Which says that, "Even though I walk through the, I walk through the darkest valley, I will fear no evil. For you are with me, your road and your staff, they comfort me." So when you work with God, you are assured of his protection because the Lord will take care of you. Even when things are tough, you are assured of God's protection in everything.
Sure. Wow. Thank you so much. Uh, a point was just given by Anne that the reason for working with God is because, is because God is our comfort. And the, the verse which has just been read, Psalms 23, and from verse 4. The Bible says that, "Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death", or some interpretations will say the darkest valley, "I will fear not evil, for you are with me. Your road and your staff, they comfort me." And by the way, what is the difference between a road and a staff? What is, what is the work of a road and what is the work of a staff? Just, I'm just thinking aloud. If the, if, if, if the Bible says, God is saying that his road and his staff comforts us, what is the difference? Are they the same? Or they are different? If they're different, what is the difference between a road and a staff? Yes, Timothy?
Yes, your opinion.
Yeah.
A road is meant to correct or to, uh, yes, to correct. And a staff is used to, uh, direct, yes, to show the direction.
Or to guide, yes. Okay, wow. Now, if the Bible talks about, um, his road and his staffs comforts us. A road is used for correction. And basically, people are being corrected when they are going astray. And, um, the staff is just used to guide. And maybe there's something you did wrong and God is enabling you to come back. So in correction, in rebuking, in God guiding you, the Lord is still comforting you because his road and his staff comforts us. So even if, um, God, actually, God rebukes people. The Bible says that in God opposes the proud, which means if God has opposed you, then it means he has rebuked you. So in that process of rebuking, God is comforting you. And that is one reason why you should work with God. His road and his staff will comfort you. So the Lord is always walking besides you. He's going through every situation with you. There is no situation in your life that God will step aside. He leaves you to go into it. Then after you have gone through that process, then he comes back. He's always besides you. It is us human beings who can live, working with God. But with him, he's always there with us. So he loves and cares for us and will always stand by our side. Irregardless of the matter, irregardless of the situation, he will always stand by our side. So working with him will always give us comfort, knowing that he's always there for us. And him being there for you means he has an open arms so that you can just come, uh, however sinful you are, however, um, that you may be. Look at how Jesus died on the cross, he was pitted on, he was mocked, and even the wound.
Is it me who can't hear?
I think the facilitator is having a challenge on his end.
Yeah, I thought it was only me. It seems there is some we are losing.
Yeah, we've lost him. He's offline. So we'll just give him a few minutes maybe to reconnect.
Sawa, sawa.
And pray for us, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think I got lost when I was speaking about God being our comfort and is our comfort. Sorry, I lost the meeting because of network issues. But that aside, God is our comfort. And therefore, that is a reason why we should work with him. I said we want to take two more other reasons as we continue. Any other reason for working with God? Who, who has not talked here? Anna talked, this I talked. Okay. So if majority of us have talked. Maybe if you have any other reason why we, we need to work with God?
Yes, I, I, I thought of another
Yes.
reason.
Yes.
One of the attributes of God is that he is all-knowing. It means then that if I work with him, I'll not get lost because he knows everything. He knows the roots, he knows the valleys, the mountains. And, and therefore, I'm in safe hearts. He is all-knowing. He knows what is happening, what is going to happen, what has not happened. And therefore, I, I am in safe hearts. I, I cannot be lost if I'm working with him. Thank you.
Welcome, um. Actually, that's very true. If, if you're working with God, then you are in safe hearts. Uh, you can't get lost. Either it is you who gets lost, but when you are working with him, you are always on the, on the right. God is all-knowing. He knows what you need. He knows what you should have. He knows when you should have it. He knows how you should have it. And on what dimension and on what quantity you should be having. So the, the all-knowing nature or the all-knowing trait of God will also compel us to, to work with him. By the way, because God is all-knowing, I, I, I believe that it also helps us to not to involve ourselves in unnecessary struggles. Because, um, when God directs your paths, unlike when you are the one who directs yourself, you will not be involved in unnecessary struggles because every step you will make, you are making when it is guided by God. Any other, last one? Last reason why we need to work with God? Any other reason? Yes, Joseph.
I, I quote in the book of Jeremiah 10:11. He says that he has good plans for us, plans not to fail us, but to prevail us. So basically, if you work, uh, with Christ, he will reveal, he will lead us to the good plans that he has for us. You know, he says that our plans are ours, but his plans are theirs. Basically, if you want, uh, if you want the greatness or if you want to, eh, to receive the good plan that he has for us, basically, we have to follow his work and it was all with him. I'm saying, basically, that's, that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because of the plans he has for us?
Yes.
Wow, wonderful. Uh, Joseph is connecting to the first point we gave, which is, uh, uh, there is a promise of working with God. And God having good plans for us is also a promise. Yeah, so thank you, thank you so much. We can read, uh, John 8 12. John 8:12.
I, I would also like to say something, uh, moderator.
Yes.
Um, another thing that, once you work with God, yeah?
Hmm.
It also, you, you must also demonstrate, uh, a will to read his word every day. To work with God, you must also, you know, read your Bible, if not every day, but constantly. You also must exercise faithfully. You must also be guided by his word faithfully in order to see results, both physically and spiritually. And you also must work with God, um, faithfully in order to grow in his word, spiritually, physically, emotionally. And, um, this also involves talking to him. Talking to him in the sense of prayer or talking to him also as a friend because he listens and he hears. That's, yes, that's what I would say.
Oh, wow. Working with him by talking to him in prayers, but also reading the word as he talks to you. Actually, you've, um, just mentioned whatever wanted us to check. Uh, let us check John 8:12. Who has gotten John 8:12? John 8:12, John the Gospel.
When Jesus spoke again to the people, he said, "I am the light of the world. Whoever follows me will never walk in darkness, but you have the light of life."
Yes. When Jesus spoke to the people again, he said, "I am the light of the world. And whoever follows me will never walk in darkness, but we have the light of life." Now, who are the people who will have the light of life? Are they everybody or just a specific kind of people who does something which Jesus said? The preceding, uh, the preceding verse is saying, "Whoever follows me will never walk in darkness." So that also gives us a reason why we should work with God, never to walk in darkness.
Sure, sure.
Then you will have the light of life. You will have the light of life. So it means aside the physical light we are seeing here, there's another dimension of light, which is life. So working with God also brings life. Is that true? Hello? Working with God also brings life. So it is, it is, it is, it is, it is a good thing, it is a good thing to, to work with God and to devote ourselves working in him. There are many, many reasons for working with God. We have just only highlighted but a few. Uh, but there are many, even if you had some, there are so many. We can't, we can't exhaust them all, yes. But for our stipulated time for today, uh, those are the ones which we were in a position to exhaust and also to check. So one thing remember, even as we finish, John 8:12. Jesus is the light of the world, yes. Whoever follows him will never walk in darkness. So not everybody will walk in darkness. But if you make an intentional decision to follow Jesus, then you will never walk in darkness. Not only not walking in darkness, but also you will be or you will have the light you will be, or you will have the light of life. So one thing you should know, there is a dimension of light, which is not just for, for making people to see, but there is a dimension of light which gives life. Thank you so much for making time for today's Bible study. Were it not for your presence, it could have not been a success. So I just want us to them that did not greet us, the likes of Jen and Sarah. I think you can say hi. Oh, Jen, Jen, you can say hi. Jen, are you in a position to talk?
Hi.
Okay. Oh. Tell us something, hi, hi.
Hi, hi.
How have you been? How has your week been?
Buenas, si fue.
Amen.
I was joining another meeting, but then I found you. Maybe I'll join you next.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. iPhone, somebody has identified this iPhone. Oh, okay. Mary, if, if, if you can, if you can just say hi to us. I understand you are in the meeting, then you left, I think maybe network issues or some, some other reason. Mary, Gary?
Yes, I, I had a small breakout.
Okay.
What, what were you doing? You were saying hi.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I thank all of you, I, I love Bible study. I find I, I learn something new every day. The word of God being new every day and it is a good thing to, to be in the word of God, because you is, is part and parcel of the work, the work with God. You can't work with somebody without understanding them. So I, I like the study that I'm learning what I need to do to work with God. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next week, we will also meet to do another series of, of still working with God. Remember what we did last week, the essence, and what it entails to work with God. And today we have done reasons for working with God. So as I finish, I will ask Emily to pray for us. And before she prays, we agreed that if you have benefited from the Bible study, you will not be that jealous not to invite members of your district. I, I believe every district is represented here, so you can just give them an invite. The time is still meant to be six. If they're able to come to church, we are doing it in the church boardroom. If they're not able, the link is always there, they can join through the Zoom call. And the Lord will really bless us. So Emily, kindly pray for us.
Okay, let us pray. Our heavenly Father, and our God, we thank you this evening. Thank you, Lord, for the exposition of your word. Thank you, because your word is life to us. Your word refreshes us, oh Lord, and your word guides us even in our day-to-day lives. Help us, Father, to even be able to apply this word into our lives and in our various situations, Lord. Even in our jobs and careers, businesses and school, oh God. Help us to begin to keep your word and your commands. Father God, I pray even as we depart, that you go with us, that you keep us safe and secure. Till we meet again, that and all glory and honor shall be unto you. We honor you and we glorify your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you so much, them that have been able to join us physically and them that have been able to join us online. May God really bless you and I wish you a very, very prosperous week and a nice month. We have already started November and November has started on a good note by blessings. Of course, rain is a sign of blessing. So November is already blessed and you too are already blessed. Thank you, God bless you, bye and see you Sunday and Tuesday next week. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.